First guy, first, our school board meeting will come to order. We'll start with a pledge allegiance in a moment's silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Rush County Schools' vicious statements achieved personal excellence through a wide range of educational challenges and opportunities. Let's start with, is there any public comment today, Mr. Jameson?
Mr. President, there was not a request for public comments this month.
Well, let's move on to tell me something good. Ms., Mrs. Mastin, if you'll start us off, please.
I would love to. I actually have two staff members that I would like to recognize this month. If you spend a day in Arlington Elementary, you won't be able to miss the hard work being done by these two individuals. Mr. Bill and Mrs. Kimble are exactly what being a Wildcat is all about. Mrs. Noreen Kimble has been an employee of Rush County Schools for seventeen and a half years. In that time, she has touched the lives of countless students. From greeting them by name as they come in from the car line, to offering a calming presence and a smile during lunchtime, to exhibiting patience and perseverance while working closely with a student who is learning to read. Noreen is sweet, friendly, and gracious. She is dependable, kind, and hardworking. There are many, many children who I'm sure would tell you that their time at school was made better because Noreen was part of it. And I can count myself in the many adults who would say the same. Mr. Bill has been employed with Rush County Schools for twenty-three years. Every morning, he greets each student who gets off the bus. When we have dress-up days for special events, everyone anxiously awaits to see what Mr. Bill will be wearing. He always goes all out. He takes great pride in our school, and he works hard to make sure our building is clean and looking great. It's a place we can all be happy and be proud to be in. Our students love Mr. Bill, and he seems to take great joy in spending his days with them as well. In my time with Mr. Bill, I've appreciated the extra step he always goes to and the immediacy with which he takes care of any concern or request someone has. I can't say enough about how much I appreciate each day I have been able to work with Mrs. Kimble and Mr. Bill. They have certainly left their mark on Arlington Elementary, and they will be greatly missed as they retire at the end of this year and embark on their next adventures. Thank you both for the impact that you have made on all of us.
Good evening. This, I'm honored to introduce Ms. Maria, AKA Mia York, as our Student of the Month at Arlington. She is a second grader and was nominated by our STEM teacher, Ms. Van Fossen. Mia is a fabulous student and who can always be counted on to be kind and helpful. Here's just a few of the things her classmates and teachers had to say. Ms. Van Fossen said she asks questions and is very involved with experiments. She's always a good friend to her peers and never turns down an opportunity to help. Mr. Sunderland said Mia is a true example of students who go the extra mile in the classroom. She is a student who leads by example and doesn't have any hesitations when it comes to new concepts or challenges. She's a driven student who wants to learn as much as possible while also sharing that knowledge with her peers. She lives with a heart of joy and is an excellent candidate for Student of the Month. It's a joy seeing Mia every day. Every morning when she gets off the bus, she greets Mr. Bill and I with a smile, just with a positive attitude. I can always count on her at breakfast and lunch, being with friends and usually going to find somebody to sit with that needs somebody. She's always willing to help everybody. And knowing Mia forever now feels like, her brother Jade and I had him for a long time, and he he just glows about Mia every chance he gets. And she's an amazing young lady. We're lucky to have her. So, congratulations, Mia.
Mrs. Wilson. How are you?
I'm great. I'd like to start out with Nicole Angles. Nicole, you want to come on up? So, Nicole is a fifth grader at Milroy, and she's a wonderful student. She's respectful, responsible, trustworthy, and she's heavily involved with activities and a student that I know I can always rely on. Her teacher, Mrs. Helmick, this year says Nicole is a pleasure to have as a student. She's always actively participating in class and puts forth her best effort. She's a member of the STEM Club, History Club, Math Bowl, Spell Bowl, Cardinal Council. She participates in volleyball, basketball, and in addition, she's doing an absolutely amazing job presenting the morning announcements with the Cardinal News Crew. Nicole's positive attitude and energy are a great asset to Milroy Elementary. I asked a couple of the students in her class what they thought about Nicole. Okay. They said she's a great friend, and she's funny. Nicole is smart, and she's involved in everything. So, Nicole also was recognized by Ms. Allen, who says that Nicole's the first person to volunteer to help with any task that's needed. She often provides ideas that benefit all students and not just herself. I've witnessed her on several occasions helping and guiding peers without instruction from an adult. So, congratulations, Nicole. And so, now I'll recognize our staff members of the month. We have Mrs. Calissa Helmick and Mrs. Carly Moore. So, if you both want to come on up. We have two this, this month because last month we had one that snuck in there before one of these. So, we're going to recognize both of them. So, first of all, Mrs. Helmick, she's our, our fifth grade teacher, and she's phenomenal. This year, she teaches twenty-five fifth graders. She engages her students in learning and builds relationships with them, which is what I think is the most important thing to do. The students respect Mrs. Helmick, and this year, they've made tremendous growth. I asked Mrs. Helmick's students what they thought about her, and one student said, "Well, not to hurt anyone else's feelings, but she's the best teacher I've ever had so far in my educational career." So, that was one student. Another one, another one says, "She turns regular lessons into fun experiences, and one day, we did science all day, and it was fun, and it wasn't boring." And another student said, "She cares about us." So, I just want to commend Mrs. Helmick for what she's brought to Milroy Elementary and Rush County Schools this year, and I look forward to everything she's going to be doing. Thank you. And then, last but not least, Mrs. Carly Moore. And Carly was nominated by several of her colleagues. One colleague said, "Mrs. Moore is one of the most patient teachers I've ever met." And I can attest to that because when I go into kindergarten, I just kind of shiver a little bit. And she's just very calm and patient. One of her colleagues said, "Carly's the best kindergarten teacher I've ever had the privilege of working beside." She's compassionate and empathetic. She plans lessons for students that are exciting and engaging. She genuinely cares about each of her students and takes interest in who they are as little people, not just as students. I've never encountered anyone with the level of patience, calmness, and peace that she displays on a regular basis. Carly always refers to her students as precious because she understands that they are all worthy and important. Each one is a member of the family feeling she creates in her classroom. She's such an asset to Milroy Elementary, and that's true. Thank you.
Mrs. Edes.
We're here to honor Roxy Dobinspek today. Roxy is the daughter of Mike and Ashley Dobinspek, and Ashley is one of our homeschool liaisons. So, she spends a lot of time at school. Roxy is a great student. She was nominated by Mrs. Mason, Ms. Mason. She works hard and always follows instructions and is a great role model. She has responsibilities in the classroom that she's in charge of, and she's willing to take charge of other responsibilities as well. She's always positive and has a great attitude and is known to leave positive notes for staff on their desks, their computers, and their doors. So, any of you who have a school background, you know, the faculty kids that sometimes run the halls and go play in the gym, she's outputting really nice notes about what we see here. She's always looking for ways to brighten students' and adults' days, and we love having Roxy at our E S. She doesn't know we're surprising her. Because she's so humble, if they said, "You're going to be our staff member of the month," she'd say, "Oh, no, we need to give it to somebody else."
So, I have the honor of sharing Mrs. Ashley Dobinspek with you. She is a quiet leader who does so many wonderful things that most people don't even realize. Besides helping students through difficult times and emotions, she leads our student council, and there are many responsibilities. Among other things, she has implemented the positive attendance award for each class and supports the student council during their weekly announcement broadcast. She goes all, she goes out of her way to ensure all students get the services they need when dealing with issues. She is calm and has a soothing voice to keep students in a calm state of mind. She works so hard on building strong bonds with the kids and letting the staff know that she is there for them too. Teachers know that they can go to her with a problem, and she will not only give me a new perspective on the problem, but she will continue to check on and make sure that the teacher is being successful and that the kiddos too. Mrs. Dobinspek cares deeply for all of our kiddos, and the work she puts into them is remarkable. Congratulations.
Mr. Powers.
All right. I have the pleasure to introduce our Students of the Month. We have two Students of the Month this month. Kimberlin Argueta, who could not be here. She's at the band concert, or choir concert right now. And also Molly Korn. They were both nominated by Ms. Ashley Goleing. They are both detail-oriented. They both ask good questions. They help keep the class moving. Overall, do a great job for her, so that's why they were both nominated. Kimberlin's kind of a quiet kid, but does a great job. I'll speak a little bit more about Molly. Molly is not as quiet of a kid. She is feisty on the court, will share her opinions. I call her MC Hammer. She does a great job though. She's a great leader in our building despite what Mr. Powers says about her dad. She is, she's an incredible leader for us, a student that we love having in our building. So, Molly, congratulations. Terry Markham, come on forward. Terry Markham is our Staff Member of the Month. A couple of staff members said the following about Terry. She comes in early to help out with ILEARN because Terry teaches five out of the eight periods for us. She's a big help in getting students caught up on testing, getting back to classes sooner so they are not missing out on instruction time more than necessary. Terry is truly the definition of a team player. Same teacher also said she came in early to help in with, help with ILEARN. She's always been very kind this year to Mr. Neil and I to help out in any way possible, whether it's N W E A, ILEARN, or just let us, you know, hear what she needs to be, what's on her mind. But she's always willing to give us that help that we need. So, we are very appreciative of Terry, and later on, Terry's going to be stepping up the plate and helping us out even more next year. So, we're very appreciative of Terry and what she does for us. So, Terry, congratulations.
Mr. Krup.
Before we get into Staff Students of the Month, there's a couple additional students that I would like to recognize. So, Dominic Evans, come on up. Lena Adams, Hannah, Lena, come on up. Okay. First, I would like to recognize Dominic Evans. He has been a welding superstar also at, at W C C along with Joseph Hubbard. He was not able to be here, and I said I was going to print a picture of him. So, Joe, I put a picture of you. Here we go. Now, I don't know exactly what Dominic has to do, so I asked him to explain to everybody what is it that he does so you all can get an idea of his talents. So, kind of explain those competitions.
So, a little bit about the competition is a few months out, our teacher will let us know about it, and then he'll give us some type of weldment, whether it be groove weld, vertical, for a certain process. We'll do that, and then there will be another weldment. And then, for our state competition, he had us building projects. We built four wagons. We built two bird feeders, and I don't remember the other thing we built. But the day before we got there, he was like, just be calm, cool, relaxed. It's just another weldment. And then this last weldment we went for, for Midwest, was a vertical, a vertical groove, open route, which is two flat pieces with a forty-five degree angle with both sides beveled. And you got to weld it vertically, which is a pain. And then you had a T-joint, which was a flat piece in a piece like this. It stood right on the table. You had to make a one-inch weld every two inches so it'd come out to exactly three inches.
And then what position did your team place this past Friday?
Oh, this past Friday, we placed fifth, and then at Midwest, and then our skills team, I believe, we finished seventh.
So, just very impressive, the work at W C C, and even him explaining, it is, he is very impressive. So. And then I would like to introduce Lena Adams and the speech leader, sponsor, coach, Hannah Lenz.
Hi. So, Lena asked me to give you guys kind of a little background on what speech team is before she gives a little bit more specific details. So, kids on the speech team can choose from twelve different events, ranging from public address to interpretive, where they're doing more acting-type skills. We compete in several meets per season in the I S S D A, which is the state association, and the National Speech and Debate Association, which obviously is national. Students are judged for four rounds per meet, and they are ranked against the other kids in their room per round. And then, it's computer-generated, so I don't exactly know how it all works. Not really numbers person also. Oh, it's like golf. Okay, so like the golf, that's a good way to put it. I would say it's like gymnastics too. I don't know. Anyway, so, and they get feedback from the judges at each of these meets. And then, as the season progresses, there's just massive improvement in the kiddos that are competing regularly. It's incredible. Anyone can judge, so if anyone would like to judge, we're always looking for judges. It's actually a lot of fun. You always learn something new. Our sectional finalists compete at the state meets, so in the entire state of Indiana, speech teams converge somewhere in the middle and have a really long, very long tournament. And what did you place in that state this year? Seventh in the state this year, which is awesome. And then, we also have districts, and the district finalists go to the national tournament in June. And Lena was first in informative, champion, she wants me to say, and second in program oral inter. So, she actually qualified twice this year. And we will be heading to the exotic Des Moines this summer. And huge shout-out to Mr. Peters for helping us arrange transportation for that trip. Now, Lena, we'll give you guys a little bit of information about how a tournament works.
Yes, and myself. Okay, so, for tournaments, we'll get up at like four or five in the morning, and then we'll be at the Ag Building. It's horrible, but it's fine. You sleep on the bus. Usually, it'll be about an hour to get there. It'll be places like Fisher's, Avon, Columbus, somewhere in that area. It's usually bigger schools. And when we get there as a team, we all walk in, we find our camp, and we kind of split off in a few groups. We go like bathroom trip, fix your makeup, and then walk around, try to figure out where you're going. Usually, we'll get a map. And then, about thirty minutes before the round, the first round starts, we will get what's called schematics, which will tell you who's in your room and where you'll be going. And then, that, this is where you'll hear the term talking to walls. So, if you walk into a school before a tournament begins, you're going to see a lot of creepy-looking stuff. There's going to be like forty students just all speaking to a wall in a line. It's kind of scary if you've never seen it before. But about thirty minutes before, we all go practice. We all split off, go practice, speak to our walls. And then, we'll all just be like, you know, good luck, and then we'll compete until, I don't even know. We, sometimes we'll get home at like three, and then one time we got home at like, what, Fisher's like nine o'clock P M. So. Or midnight, depending on the tournament. And then, more about what I've done. I've done it since my freshman year. I started when COVID, twenty twenty. So, we did a mostly, no, they were all online. Yeah, they were all online, so I had to go through Zoom. I was not good in my freshman year whatsoever. I did informative speaking, which is what I've done all four years. I talked about cross-country. It was really bad. I think I still have it somewhere, but I don't, I don't want to dig it up. And then, my sophomore year is when I started to, I guess, be good, competitive, I guess. I talked about chickens, which I wish I could redo it because I love that speech so much. I went to state with it. We didn't get to go to districts because she wasn't coaching, so we didn't get signed up and everything. And then, my junior year, which is where I did a second event, so I still did informative. I talked about being left-handed, and then I did another event called declamation, which is where you take a speech that's already been given, like a TED Talk, and then you basically make it your own without changing the words. And that one, I did about women in the service. And then, that's And then, that's, in my informative, that's where I qualified for Nationals and I went to Phoenix, Arizona. Fantastic. And then while I was there, I got to do a smaller event, and that's called supplemental events, and it was exposatory, and I talked about cold sores, and I placed seventh. I was so close to being on the final stage. I'm hopefully gonna make it this year. And so this year, I've done, I did three events for quite a few. I did informative speaking, which was about crochet, and then I did declamation again, and that was about, the TED Talk was about not fitting in, like being weird, like be yourself, be weird. And then my poi, which is program oral interpretation. You take stories, poetry, prose, which is like, which is the stories, and then there's like drama or whatever, and you make it over a central theme, and my theme this year was illness and its effects on the family. I did very well with that and I did not expect it whatsoever. I actually ended up loving it and I did not wanna do it, but she made me do it. But yeah, so I qualified for those two at Nationals and only able to do one. But I actually am on, what's today, Tuesday? On Thursday, I'm going to Nebraska for probably this second biggest tournament besides Nationals, so I'll be missing school for that, really excited. But I'll be going there and I'll be there, I'll be there until Sunday. And I will hopefully be able to compete with my main event, but I honestly wanna just kind of get, I wanna get that over with and I hope I don't move on because I wanna do my, I wanna do my secondary event. And this year, my exposatory is about caffeine and coffee, so, yeah, exactly why I did it.
Thank you so much, please give Lena a big hand.
Yeah, I have the honor of introducing our Student of the Month, Alyssa Wommy. First of all, this is hands-down one of the kindest people we have in the school. You know, as administrators, we don't get as much time as in one of the classrooms. We're watching her in the halls, the cafeterias, everywhere. You can just see the self-listening that she does for people. It is not uncommon to see her hold the door in the mornings, sometimes five, 10 minutes for people. We always watch her in the cafeteria after people exit. She puts chairs back, she picks up trash, and she's definitely not looking for any kind of attention. She just does it because that's the kind of heart she has. So, we're really excited to be able to honor her this month. And I just want to read a few comments that some teachers gave us. Alyssa's a very kind young woman. On two occasions this year, we had students move in and join the yearbook class. With both of these students, Alyssa was the first person to greet them and ask if they needed help with anything. She's always very positive and willing to help in any way she can with a task for the yearbook. That's what we have here. Alyssa is a treasure and a pleasure to watch her grow and gain confidence in the arts. Her kind and gentle spirit is a constant reminder of her authenticity. She will be missed next year, so Alyssa, congratulations.
I feel like this is kind of what we're all about at RCHS. I mean, our diversity is a diversity in greatness. I mean, from welding to speech to just overall absolute kindness. This is kind of what we have seen as an absolute theme at RCHS and we're all, I know the three of us, we get excited for this time every month, so. This month, it is my pleasure to introduce our Staff Member of the Month. Now, he does not like this at all, okay? He told me there was gonna be a cardboard cutout of him tonight here, and not him. So, Mr. Blair Orm. As most of us know, that Mr. Orm is retiring this year. He is retiring after 35 from agricultural education, okay?
Do we need some help?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, I just wanna read one thing before we do that, okay? So, there are some things that are said about Mr. Orm, but I wanna read this one thing, and I'm sorry if this takes some time and I hope I get through it. But this was written by a student, it says, "Freshman year, Mr. Orm saw the potential for leadership in me and I could not see my, I could not see him myself and encouraged me to do creed speaking for Green Hand initiation. While I did not win the creed speaking competition, Mr. Orm taught me more valuable lesson on confidence and preparation. I can speak in front of crowds and survive. He developed my self-resilience and confidence. A seed had been planted. Sophomore year, Mr. Orm inspired me to advance my involvement in FFA by running for an FFA office. Due to my commitment to basketball, I could not make the officer team. Mr. Orm talked to me in his office about how, in spite of the fact that I was not made an officer, I could still be as active and just as much of a leader. My sophomore year was a tremendous year in personal growth and attitude assessment due to Mr. Orm's guidance. The seed was nurtured, watered, and enabled to grow into a small plant."
Very agricultural.
This is very agricultural speech, I like it. Junior year, Mr. Orm pushed me to run for the office again. This year, this year, and I was able to make it onto the team as the chapter treasurer. Leading by example, Mr. Orm has impressed upon me the importance of collaborations with the officer team through teamwork, hard work, and dedication. I have learned improvement, I have learned improved organization through an increase in involvement, and taught me the importance of time management, self-sacrifice, commitment, and responsibility. The plant is repotted to allow room for continued growth.
Impressive.
This is getting good, isn't it? Senior year, Mr. Orm has impressed upon me the importance of service, preparation, and paying it forward. Like Mr. Orm's example, I now look to encourage the newly-elected officers in the FFA and help to increase their involvement and personal improvement for the potential with persuasive enthusiasm. That's how Mr. Orm tricked me into the creed speaking. Mr. Orm encouraged the importance of family and friendship, improving my relationships. The plant blossoms, then blooms.
Do they have a super senior year?
No super senior year, but if, if you notice, the theme in this is that the importance that Mr. Orm has had on just not this person's life, okay? He's a rare breed, and I have found, and I, Mr. Orm and I, he's become a friend, a good friend. And I love Ag, I love FFA because it's a leadership program, we talk about this all the time. They think it's a farmer's program, it's a leadership program. And I personally have found a direct correlation in schools that have a strong FFA program and the amount of discipline that has to go on in the school. It's always loaded, because they're taught discipline and they're taught these things through FFA. And I've talked to these things with Mr. Orm about it. And we got a cool banquet coming up Saturday, so I'm pretty excited about that. But Mr. Orm has had an impact on many, many lives, many lives, many lives that he may not even remember. But I'll tell you what, instead of just telling you, let's just show you, okay? Bring me some help in here. These are the lives that Mr. Orm impacts yearly, yearly. Bob Hole's standing here, I had a conversation with him last week and he's, and we were talking about the influence of Mr. Orm has put him on the trajectory of his life. And, and he does that year after year after year with all of these young people. And this is what he has meant to Rushville High School, and this is what he means to Ag Education, this is what he means to FFA. This is just the type of person Blair Orm is, and he hates this. Our Staff Member of the Month, Blair Orm. I do have a sticker in the gift card, you know, where's this? That's not, oh yeah.
Mr. Powers, before you go further, do you wanna take your group picture first instead of reassembling?
Oh, okay. All right, so we wanna take our picture, where's this? Where'd you go? They want us to take our group picture here with this before they reassemble.
It'll take those two minutes to get them together.
Now, try like perspective.
Yeah, can we get that?
Okay, one, two, three.
There we go, all right.
This is just for practice for comprehension.
Mr. Peters, our speaking, FFA president.
Yeah, I killed my beer, I'm glad you got that face on there. Just to say, not bragging on Rushville or anything, but just to say, I'm the one that gets to follow that ass, so, congratulations.
So, I get the pleasure of acknowledging the Employee of the Month from the operations side of the district, and unbeknownst to him, I'm acknowledging Phil Brashiver tonight. So come on up here, Phil. I'm not sure if you put it together or not, I was kind of cryptic with you this morning.
Yes, you were.
Yes. So, Phil's retiring July 8th, is that correct? Even though we're not counting days, because we have lots of work yet to do, right?
I've got a lot of days.
We have a lot of work to do, hopefully.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do, thank you, sir. And I'd just like to acknowledge Phil, I think Warren said something about the Student of the Month and the high school being kind, and Phil is a reminder of that. We have, all have full agendas and all have a lot of tasks that we try to complete daily, and Phil is kind every day. As a matter of fact, he's lovingly known as Pastor P. That's his nickname with his side job that he has. And he often fills me with the Holy Spirit occasionally when he comes in, and also gives me words.
What a lay-on hands, everybody.
I mean it sometimes, but I have enjoyed, even though it's been a short time, I've enjoyed working with Phil, taking care of the custodial needs across the district, and also being a sounding board for me as I field the lay of the land of Rush County and being welcome to me. Let alone the service of the district, Phil, you're gonna be missed, and I tried to talk you into staying, but that didn't take, so, not staying? You got, you have people to pastor, so that's right. So, thank you, Phil, appreciate your service, congratulations.
Warner, comments, Mr. Peters.
Congratulations to the parents of the kids that was nominated. You guys did a good job, that's where it starts, is at home. All the staff members, great job. Blair, I had five kids, you could've filled this room five times if they really brought everybody in. The kids, you impacted and grew their careers. You guys are cool. We'll miss you. Don't mind how you're gonna get wrong with your brothers, but you'll all be watching.
Thanks.
I also wanna congratulate, congratulate all of you. I was at a community foundation workshop on volunteerism a couple of weeks ago, and a comment was made that we always, when we have volunteers, we thank them, but we never thank the person behind them, which is their spouses, and how much oftentimes that they have to give up something because of what the volunteer is doing for the organization that they're volunteering for. And as I listened to that, I thought, you know, we do the same thing, or we, we miss out by not thanking the spouses of our teachers. And this being Teacher Appreciation Week, I think we need to give a big thanks to all the spouses of all of our educators. Because of all of our teachers who give up the extra time, may have to miss out on going to something for the family, grading papers when they may wanna be doing something else. So, again, thanks to all the spouses of all of our educators and all the time that you allow our teachers to do the jobs that they need to do. On the same note, all of us have had a teacher that has impacted our life, and during the 38 years that I taught, the best thing that I ever got wasn't the pay, it wasn't an award, it was always a note that I got from a kid that I never expected, thanking me for something that I did that I may not have realized. So, I encourage all of us, if you got that one educator in your life that you can think of who's impacted your life, that you can somehow make contact with, send them the notes, send them the card, give them a call and say thanks, because I guarantee you, they will appreciate it.
Mr. Powers. Congratulations to all the students. Thank you to all the staff for another great year. I hope you all enjoy your summer, finish school strong. It'd be great to see all of you come through this and everybody recognize that's wonderful. Blair, thank you, thanks for all you've done. I hate seeing you leave, but I'm happy for you. Dash, thanks for sharing with us. I'm not sure what you're up for with this retirement, but we're ready for you. But, thanks for everything you've done, I really appreciate it.
Ed, you always comment about how neat it is to watch the parents, grandparents get emotional. I also like watching siblings roll their eyes. So we go back and forth as the sibling rolls her eyes. Thanks to all the teachers, I've had a lot, I could get all the most, I don't know. But like he said, there are some teachers that I never thanked, I wish I had, because they're not even anymore. Thank you, Blair, for my kids, my daughter especially. I got a teary phone call from her when she found out you were, you were dying, so, you've helped a lot, thank you.
Listening to the storm outside, I'm going to hold my comments so that we still have lights on during the picture-taking.
I am not. Blair, I never did any of the FFA stuff, but to see all those kids come in as a teacher, that's all you can hope for, is that you have kids bouncing in like they did to thank you. And that just really hit me real hard in the fields tonight. Teacher Appreciation Week, it's great. I got a former, I'm sure Michael's gonna tell me after the meeting how much he appreciated me. And to the teachers out there, you got, you know, this last month left. I know this is the hardest month of the school year. Hold on, you're almost there, keep going, congratulations, my condolences.
Well, last two years ago, the board hired a new superintendent, and it was with a lot of hope that we, with our decision to hire, that Mr. Jameson would take us from a good school to a better one. In April, Arlington Elementary, under Mrs. Mast's guidance, achieved HR's law. In April, Arlington Elementary, under Mrs. Mastin's guidance, to achieve HRAS Level 1. It's my understanding that Milroy and RES may soon follow. I wish to applaud Mr. Jameson, Mrs. Mastin, and all the administrators for all their efforts to take our schools and make them better. So I just want to say thank you to that. We'll break, and those of you who said that, we'll break for five minutes to take pictures, and then the rest of you can maybe leave after pictures, except.
Before we start this back up, Amy can tell them that they're all blind because. We'll start the, with the superintendent's schools' consent items, Mr. Jameson, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Flip the page. First thing that we have is out-of-state and overnight field trips. The RCHS Spanish class, students going to Jungle Gyms in Cincinnati, Ohio on May 8th, it's just a one-day trip. The RCHS Boys Lions Soccer Team to Anderson Soccer Team Camp, departing on July 12th and returning on July 14th. The RCHS Cheerleading to UCA Stunt Clinic in Florence, Kentucky on June 8th, it's just a day trip. RCHS Cheerleading to Keans Island in Mason, Ohio on June 19th. And the Rushville Boys Basketball to Hanover College Basketball Camp, departing on June 19th and returning on June 20th. Also like to go over donations. We received $1,000 from the Holzblock Dairy Farm to the Milroy Elementary School. $1,000 from Walmart to Milroy Elementary School. $400 from Pi Zeta Theta in Milroy to Milroy Elementary. $371.75 from St. Paul's United Methodist Church to the RCHS Mole Fund Account. I seek the board's approval of the minutes of April school board meeting, personnel report, donations, out-of-state field trips, and claims and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to second discussion. Attorney, now call for the vote, all faves say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same?
Abstained.
I abstained.
I abstained.
Three abstains. Motion passes. Consider approval of the agreement with Head Start, sir.
This is necessary to officially approve the memorandum of understanding with Head Start, so that we can offer the program. I seek the board's approval for the Head Start program at Milroy Elementary School for next school year.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to second discussion.
Do we know, how many students do they have out there?
They're about 15, this year they had two classrooms, but their enrollment's down a little bit, so they'll probably have about 15 next year, one classroom.
Anything else? All for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, carries. Request authority to advertise, receive bids, and quotes for petroleum bids for 2024, 2025.
Hard to believe we're at this time of year again, feels like we just did that, and it's one of Mr. Peters' first acts when he got here, so he was ready to fire it up to do it again. That we, I seek the board's approval to advertise for petroleum bids for next school year. So we're ready to advertise, if you give your approval.
So moved.
I have a motion to second discussion. Mr. Peters, are we, do we have enough, last year we had the issue of a number of people, enough people to bid, and we think there will be a discussion.
Actually, it was the year before that I felt like was a little light, this past one that I did, we actually had some competitive bids with some bigger companies and with the local companies as well. I hope to have it start a little earlier, hence it's going through the May approval process, so we can maybe get that started once the school year finishes. And then, there's a timeline we have to follow with newspaper postings and putting the bid officially out. We'll follow that according to policy and try to pick the best bid.
Any other discussion or questions? Call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, motion carries. Consider approval for textbook adoption.
Another one of those end-of-the-year things, and I seek the board's approval for the adoption of the following textbook as part of our curriculum from the Indiana Department of Education, approved vendor list for our K-6 curriculum. Open Court Reading Series, five-year rotation. I-Radi Math, five-year rotation. And Amplify, which is our DIBELS testing, that pricing was only good for one year, do you do a year-to-year on that contract?
Is DIBELS, is that new, or we did that last year?
We did it last year, but it's been done for several years.
This is about up higher or different than before?
They're about the same, but it's sticker shot when you look at it, and that's why you have to go five years. We went with vendors that are approved with the new science and reading curriculum that's coming out, all of this flows together. So, there's only, I think, five or six vendors on that list that were approved. You want to pick the one that's on the approved list so that everything flows.
What about sixth grade?
Sixth grade will, sixth grade will share with the high, with the middle schools, reading series, because it only goes up to fifth grade with the reading series, so, yeah.
And the science of reading only covers fifth grade?
Yeah, that's, this is the bridge gap that we are waiting for more legislating from the Department of Education to come out. Because it seems like the sixth, seventh grade is kind of in that limbo right now. We wanted to carry it on through sixth grade and into seventh grade, so they're gonna share materials for the sixth graders out, the seventh grade curriculum.
I don't see a motion.
It's been reported to me that we're under a tornado warning. Just, just the answer.
There's one on the ground in Glenwood.
It's where? It's southern Rush County. Before they have, they were very.
It's just for you, Luke Julie, it's okay, you're safe here.
And New Salem.
Oh, wonderful. Sorry, Frank.
I'm getting orientated motion.
Probably have a piece right out that door. Did you hear it?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and the other discussion. All those in favor, call for vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion carries.
Like we have done with other staff members who have taken on additional responsibilities and duties for the corporation, I'm asking that Kylie Gordon get a stipend. She and Mrs. Schroeder have written a grant this year, and that fluctuates, and RCS was awarded a $5,000 grant for the McKinney Vento. I'd like to use $2,000 for her stipend, and then the $3,000 that are remaining to supplies for students throughout the corporation. It is also my plan for next school year, when we are in collective bargaining, to add this to the ECA stipend, so I don't have to keep coming back, it's just gonna be part of the contract. But I do seek the board's approval for a $2,000 stipend, one-time stipend, kind of word.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, a discussion. Attorney, now call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion carries.
Once again, time of year for any changes to the student handbooks for the 2024, 2025 school year. He's building, he held a committee meeting to discuss the handbook changes, and have agreed to those changes for the next school year. I seek the board's approval for the student handbook changes for the 2024, 2025 school year.
So moved.
For your second, I have a motion to second discussion. Most of these changes to I-Radi Gym were mandated by the state this year.
Cell phone absenteeism, yes.
I talked to Mr. Peters earlier, he said some of you were cleaning up some language at the high school level, right, sir?
Some repetitive things that had been in here, as well as some outdated material that our guidance department cleaned up for the guidance section of it as well. And then it's all gonna change from the class of '29.
Mr. Powers, you feel yours is pretty clean too, the junior high?
Once again, I was updating some things, I felt like I was making it more modern, I guess. Cleaning some language up, getting in line with what is needed now in state law. Just adding some languages, things that have been brought to our attention throughout the year or had not been in there before.
On the cell phone policy, like I noticed the consequences for having it were the same as consequences for having it and videoing other people without their permission. I guess my question was if they're videoing somebody, shouldn't that be a little more strict? Or consequences a little bit more than just having it on their personal?
That would be a separate, that would be a separate issue.
We currently have, it's under Level 3 in our discipline, and that is suspension and.
And honestly, there's some legal things that a lot of times we have to turn over to the F O's when that happens.
Could lead to other things, and we didn't change that, so that's why it wasn't included in.
Okay, yeah, that's, just like I read this, I'm like, okay, it's the exact same consequences of just a student having the phone as well as videoing, and I felt like the videoing part or taking pictures was much more severe than.
We, we have had that this year, and both times we went for five to 10 days pending because of the extent of the video, where it was with the pictures taken. So we go pretty extreme on that.
I had a question on the second offense for, when they used it for videoing, and it doesn't sound like it's much different. Well, it didn't seem very clear to me what you're really trying to get across with the second one, where it just says, phone is confiscated and turned into the office, students may pick up the phone up at the end of this day for the remainder of the school year, and that says the same thing in the first offense, so I didn't understand how that's different than the second offense.
Yeah, because the first offense, turn it into the office.
Right.
Second offense, turn it in, adding on the lunch detention with that. And then the, the third offense is, okay.
This is on down with the videoing, when they use it, video and so on without permission.
That is for, we had, we've, and we had the teacher on our handbook committee that this actually happened to. It was a recording of a conversation a student was having with the teacher without the willingness of the teacher.
I understand that, but I just, when I read that second offense, at least the copy that I got doesn't really say. I'm the one that sent to us.
Right here. I think it just, or the one that they have.
The one that was sent to us.
Okay, I don't know, did you not send this one?
This, I think the last two here didn't mean, because this is just, this is where it's talking about the. This, I think the last two here didn't mean, because this is just, this is where it's talking about the recording and that's the separate here. We already identified the three consequences. I think this just, I accidentally put the, the these two here because it was already identified in previous ones. So that's where the, the difference was there. Because you added them here. So the recording is the separate discipline here. They're asking for these two here. And I think this is just actually a copy paste. So that is not for that one.
Well, actually, if, i- it does, the first offense, if you were to, if you were to record a conversation with a teacher or something like that, not, I'm not talking pictures in the restroom and things, that's a much more serious manner. That we went with phone is confiscated, turned into the office, the student pick up the phone at the end of the day. They have to turn their phone in the office at the beginning of the school day and can pick it up. And that's at our discretion, depending on how, and generally we consult with the teacher and say, hey, how long you want to not have a phone?
But my question was the.
The second point is they have to do that for the remainder of the year, period, no questions asked. Phone is confiscated, turned into the office.
So the first time it's at your discretion how long it is.
Correct.
The second time it's for the written.
Correct.
Okay, that's why, that's why I didn't.
Yes. So that's where we, uh, we had some discussion, you had left actually, that meeting. We had some discussion about that being a little harsher than a normal cell phone violation. You know, it's a lot more when you have somebody record a conversation than it is just somebody have their cell phone out texting. So that's where we kind of went with that. So.
And keep in mind, both current, both handbooks, the middle school and high school, while we do spell out the specific consequences with this proposed change, it does say in the handbook that this can be used as a guide. So we do have things outside of this that we can use if we feel like this isn't getting the attention of the child. So not only can we say it's going to be for the remainder of the year, but we can tack on discipline with that at the same time.
Then I also, and this is more of a comment more than anything else on the homework policy of absent. So they're absent. The next time they have the class, which is two days later, they get the assignment. And then two days later is when it's due. That really, I, I, from a standpoint of, I've been, having taught them blocks schedule, that really stretches that out. So I don't know if there's, I mean, they're high school kids. Is there any way that we can say, hey, the next time you're at school, it's your responsibility to get with that teacher the first day back? And then it be due? Or is that pushing it too much?
We are, we are actually, uh, currently exploring our late work policy because really at the high school, we're all over the place. And my goal is to give a framework of when you can turn late work in, when it's accepted. And then you could, almost like the I G S A, you could go tighter, you just can't go loose. So, uh, we have, we have teachers that don't accept late work, period. And even when you're absent, you better turn it in or you don't get credit. That's a lot of our dual credit classes, things like that. Um, in Spanish, I totally get it. It has to be done that day. I mean, because then when you're speaking Spanish, it's got to, you got to keep up with it. So we're all over the place with it. Um, and we're trying to explore what we need to do and how we need to do that within our own guidelines of our staff handbook as well. So.
He's referring to like when students are absent.
Yes, yeah, because.
My daughter missed a whole week of school and I couldn't get a teacher to give her assignments while she was gone. We knew she was going to be out a week. And, you know, or when we were going to a livestock show, knew they'd be gone. And it was always, oh, we'll just have them get with us when they get back. Well, like he said, it could be.
I will say anytime we know, if I have a parent call me about a prearranged absence, I immediately send emails out to the teachers. Now, the good thing is the majority of the teachers do place things on Google Classroom.
Right.
And so I would say it's properly, again, I know, I know what it says in the handbook, but I would also say it's probably an exception if a student really doesn't have any idea what the assignment is until they get back and then two days later. Uh, I, I don't think that, that happens very often now just because of the Chromebooks, the technology, Google Classroom and, and, uh, and that sort of thing. And I think, you know, especially like the prearranged absences, um, I might contact the teachers and let them know. And then they will reach out to those kids and they can get as much as they can. Uh, we just had that happen a couple of weeks ago, actually.
As a classroom teacher, when, when, when computers first came to the classroom, my thinking was no such things like work now. It's there. You're not too sick to punch the key. You can sit on your phone all day. You're not too sick to punch the keys. I would, I would rather say no such things like work. If you're home, you got to do it once on Google Classroom and that's it. Um, but then I don't know what that would do with our, I don't know what that would do to our, our grades. And then of course, we got families who don't have internet service and different things like that. So you get caught there. I would gladly do whatever we think is, uh, fair and consistent and a little more tight. So I don't.
I'm just throwing out a suggestion. It's the, you're talking about high school students. It's the student's responsibility if they are absent to go onto Google Classroom and look at what assignments they missed and get.
And that's what they're.
The teacher's responsibility to get the assignments under Google Classroom. So it, the kids have to have some skin in the game. Because like you said, when I was a high school principal, we were all over the place and you hate making definitive, put people in a box. But if that becomes, this is what we are expecting. Students, you're absent. We all have Chromebooks and eventually you'll get, you'll find internet if you, because you want to be on your phone. You find internet to download your assignments and stuff. Prearranged, we had kids, you know, they knew they were out. They had taken our paper around to each teacher, whether it was whatever block day it was. But everybody had to sign it because you're leaving. You may have a vacation rental in Florida and that's the time the timeshare says, okay, you knew you were going to be gone, FFA, ag, you know, livestock judging, all that stuff. Here it is. Then the teachers, here's what you're missing. Or here, check it and stuff. So I like to go on vacation, but I spend most of my morning while I'm getting my wife her coffee, read emails. I can do it. They can do it too, you know? It's their responsibility for their grades.
And, uh, another question, you moved perfect attendance to two blocks missed rather than one? What was the thinking behind that?
We did that in alignment with middle school, just to keep our policies the same. They had, um, half day, so we just made ours aligned. So it was the same.
Plus the middle school's not on block schedule.
I understand.
Yeah, so that's where you, that's where we're four periods from, for the, for the entirety.
If kids are missing school, it says phone call or no. Is email not okay?
For a parent to call in, is that what, no, they need to, they're not.
Because anybody could send that email.
Okay.
We've had enough kids try to, uh, call in.
We've had a lot of them by boyfriends.
Okay. I just, because I've had a few parents say, you know, their work, they're not in a situation where they can call. They'd like to email, but they're told they can't.
Yeah, because that email could come from anybody. So that's why we had that.
Okay. And then trinity, do we, as a board, we have to come up with a new, what was that? I know of the area.
From the state and it's in the handbooks.
Okay. I just saw we had that in there and I just wanted to make sure we were in alignment with that.
I'm going to step back to the cell phone thing because I could have one more note on that. So what's the consequent? So they've gotten in trouble, they're supposed to turn in their phone when they come in. What's the consequence if they could choose not to turn in the phone?
In support nation.
Cut.
Immediately.
What if they turn in an old phone, keep their good phone?
That has happened once and so we did catch that person and they don't have their phone the rest of the year. We are, and we're going to remedy the, the communication piece on that so that when, uh, when students reach third cell phone violations and they're to turn their phone in for the remainder of the year, we're going to notify those teachers of that student. And then if they see a cell phone on them, they know immediately, hey, you, you, that must not be the right cell phone you put in there. So we're, we're going to increase our communication with the teachers to help that out a lot. So you're right, that's, my daughter actually did that. My wife just looked at me and said, she has a phone just like that. Go check it. What are you talking about? Sure enough, it was a dummy phone. She was in her bed texting. She's lucky she's alive. Not for me either.
So, and the middle school had removing, so we don't do agenda books anymore?
Correct.
Correct, okay. And then they had a change in dress code policy. Is the high school changing theirs?
Yes.
Okay.
We're in the lot with the same.
Yeah, we're in line with the dress.
Okay. I didn't see it in the high school part of it, but I, I heard remember from my exchange student that that was being changed, so.
The only thing being changed, I don't want to say everybody was not looking at it, was in regards to the.
Length?
The length, yes. That is the only thing that, it was just more cleanup language, making it more consistent because there was a little contradiction in holes above the knee compared to length, fingertip length. And so we just cleaned that. That's it. So.
In elementary, you just added the.
We added what Amy Matthews had suggested, but we also added several years ago, well, several years ago. We were advised by Dr. Vance to take out undergrounds for suspension and expulsion, the list of all of the offenses. We replaced that with the rubric. We went ahead and put the list back in because the high school and the middle school had never taken those out. So it clarifies some things.
Lot of vertical alignment.
Yeah.
As you move, everything's.
That's all I have.
Any other discussion or questions? During that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Adoption carries.
Mr. President, I do have a few other things under other. Uh, the Laughlin Center facility use application and agreement to add the following under rental fee section. Uh, Laughlin manager fee of $45 an hour. We feel that this will adequately compensate the Laughlin Center manager for his or her time spent on those events. This fee would be paid for by the renter of the Laughlin Center and not cause RCS any additional money. I seek the board's approval to add that to our rental agreement.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second discussion.
How often are we outside? I mean, is that just like when 4A chooses it during the fair, the fair board uses it? How often is it used by?
Three or four times a year. It's not, it's not a ton, but it's compensating for people's time to come in. We want not anybody up there just pushing buttons and stuff.
Right.
What about the FFA banquet this weekend? Is that considered?
That's a school.
That's a school function.
That's what I figured.
He'll put in a claim ticket and we'll pay for it. So he wants it passed tonight, so he gets paid for Saturday night. Make sure you tell him that too.
It's on the video.
Any other discussion, questions? Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Really, I've got four more things really quick and just a shout out to, um, one, we'll start off with teacher appreciation week. And at this time, I'd like to personally thank all of the amazing teachers and support staff that do the work each and every day. This job's a grind and we just wanted to take one week, and it's really should be all year round, to appreciate what our teachers are doing of not only teaching the subject matter, but they also build the relationships with those students. Um, you know, I this week got a Facebook notification from a former student giving me a shout out for the impact I had on their life. And that just warms your heart. That's why we became teachers. Um, it, we want to pay the good wage, but we, it's really a soft, it's a calling, it's a service. And to the kids of Rush County and, but we also honor our teachers. So I just wanted to say thank you to them. Also, like to, uh, you've already said it and we've talked about it, but I like when our schools are front page news for all the right reasons. Arlington Elementary, um, for being HRS level one for a safe and collaborative environment. So congratulations to Arlington Elementary. Um, we got some, uh, we already have a sign made that'll be delivered on Thursday to hang in their front lobby as an acknowledgement of that accomplishment. We got a couple of other schools knocking on the door here real soon. So congratulations to Arlington Elementary. Um, also would like to congratulate Milroy Elementary for being selected the second year in a row by the Indiana Department of Education as a family-friendly, friendly school. So congratulations to Milroy Elementary. That goes into a lot of work, um, for them. And my last one is I'd like to congratulate Brushville Consolidated High School for having 20 senior students graduate with the Indiana College Corps and eight senior students graduating with C T and animal agribusiness. These students will be at Richmond High School as part of IV Tech's graduation ceremony. Uh, this is just outstanding for RCHS and is providing our students with these opportunities. I also want to point out that last year, we had zero seniors graduating with the Indiana College Corps. And in one year, we've got 20 and that's no small task. And we got plans to have that grow even further in the future. That college savings to families, if you paid for college, you know what that cost and having those, uh, credits is huge. So just in, so proud of the kids. It's nice when you get a nice long list of 28 kids that are, uh, getting those extra awards. So congratulations to them. That's all I got, Mr. President.
Mr. Peters?
Ready for the board report from operations? Um, I talked about transportation first. I'll be quick. I'm happy to report that we have a couple of new drivers in the pipeline to replace our retirements this year. So feel very, very blessed that we're not in dire need for the district for bus drivers, although it's always an item of concern. I'd also say that I've talked with other districts across the state and there is a massive bus driver shortage across the state. It's a major problem for some districts, but we're blessed to be in the position that we're in. Uh, we're having a retirement luncheon on May 20th at the bus garage. If you want to stop by, stop by. Um, and also we'll have our annual safety meeting on June 6th. You're welcome to attend that as well. With maintenance and grounds, um, it has been a constant repair of, like, for instance, the water heater at the Laughlin Center went out yesterday, today. Yeah, went out today. And the ladies and bookkeeping helped me got it, helped me process a P O quickly so we could get that fixed. But it's just constant and I'd just like to thank our maintenance guys, um, from Dan all the way down to, to Kevin and Bud for keeping it going. And our grounds guys keep the, the facilities and the grass looking green and cut. We keep working and chipping away at big picture, trying to make our campus beautiful. So thanks to those guys. Lastly, on that front, turned in an insurance claim for Arlington on the lightning surge that they experienced. And we keep finding more and more problems. Um, we have, we had to replace the fire panel, the entire panel. It's, you know, anywhere from 40 to 60,000, uh, but it was directly caused by the lightning strike. And we keep finding other things that were fried due to that strike. So we're working through that. We've got our mind on R E S remodel with custodial service, um, but I'm happy to report there that we're fully staffed in that regard as well. So all in all, just, there's a lot of work to do and we just keep it all day to day. So thanks, thanks to our staff for keeping up.
Has the insurance at Arlington, has that been good or?
Yeah.
No problems?
Yeah.
Sometimes insurance.
We had a little bit of a squabble to start, but they just wanted to ensure, there's such a thing called a lightning affidavit that the, the gentleman that gave the recommendation to replace the system had to sign the affidavit that it was, um, needed repaired and that we weren't replacing the system with a massive upgrade, you know? So he had to sign that affidavit before that. So yes, it's, it's flowing okay. I'm, but it's by far from being done. I haven't got the insurance check in hand yet. That's all I got.
Mrs. Crayor?
Hi, I've given you the, um, interest earned for this year up through April. Crest Indiana's earned over 56,000 just this year. And then I also gave you the bank's financial balance report up through the end of April. And then, um, tomorrow, Michelle, Paul, Stokka and I will be going. And then, um, tomorrow, Michelle Postac and I will be going to the State IASO Conference. The rest will be, will be getting some training on different, um, topics. That's what I have.
Is there, because we get like individual checks written. Is there any way instead of individual checks written, because I know there's like a code or a fund, that we could just get? Like, utili, get it, so it's not so cumbersome to look at, I guess? And I've done it for many years, but, uh, to kind of go through there, just itemize it out versus checking out?
Are you talking about the docket?
Yes.
So, you don't, so you don't want to see every check?
I mean, I, I would rather see-
Just the total of like utilities?
Yes. Is, is that possible, easy, I mean, by using the codes, you can break it out, like what we spend per code item?
I mean, the only thing I would question and it would be something we probably need to ask State Board of Accounts, is you're approving everything.
Right, I mean, and that's fine too, but just, um-
A summary on the front end.
Yes, a summary on the front that's just, you know, itemized out, yeah. Utilities, what we paid, insurance, um, what goes out, you know, like the salary, um, just general, easy to-
So, you want to see both?
Yeah.
You'd like to see both?
Yeah, because I think, I mean, we have to see the checks. That has to be made available to us.
Yes.
But, um, I, I don't go through all-
Yeah.
Forty pages of that every month. I kind of pull it here and if something catches my eye, but just more of a-
Summary.
You know, this is how much money came in this month, this is how much went out and this, this is the category it went into instead of the individual checks.
Okay.
I don't want it to be a pain, but like a summary page.
Okay, I also want to know if that's possible.
Mr. Anderson?
Uh, first off, uh, last Thursday, we had a Future Champions Day. We had about a hundred and forty athletes participate. Thank you to all the administrators and bus, barn, everything that went in. And the maintenance crew for helping us get all that set up. It was a great day for our students. And the weather was beautiful and we've had two nice years in a row now, so we want to keep that going. And it's just a lot of fun to see our kids wearing their T-shirts today when I was out around schools and they're still excited about it. So, that was a lot of fun. Um, for next year, we've entered into a partnership with Relay Medicaid. And we're going to start billing for some Medicaid services that we can be reimbursed for with our speech, OT, PT, and mental health. And, uh, I'll be meeting with teachers tomorrow, rolling that out and getting parent permission for us to be able to do that. And it does not affect parents' insurance. There is no cost to them at all. It's an untapped resource for us. So, we're going to be going into that for our next school year.
What do you think that, uh?
What's that?
How much are you think you're talking about with that?
Uh, anywhere from sixty to a hundred and eighty thousand a year, they said, for our, the district our size.
It's just sitting there.
Chomping.
It's just sitting there and they're going for it, so. And Relay is a company that will help us set that up and they do the billing. And I would just be the one okaying it all at the end of the month and then we give them a percentage of what we make. That's how it's set up. It's a pretty good deal. But, and a huge thank you to all of our special education teachers, uh, with Teacher Appreciation Week. Some of them are carrying pretty large loads covering for others, but a huge thank you to them and that's it.
Mrs. Schroeder?
Good evening, everybody. Um, the world of grants, let's see, we're finishing up some grants and, um, trying to make sure that all the grants are expended like they need to be. The new grants, especially for Title I, Title II, and Title IV, in the past have been out already and we started writing them. Um, there's a delay. The US Department of Education has not sent the figures to our State Department yet. So, those grants probably won't be coming out till mid to late June. So, um, I've already told Mr. Peters and Mr. Jameson, the new grants coordinator, has any questions or needs some assistance on that, let me know. So, that's all there is in the world of grants.
This is your last meeting with us?
This is my last meeting.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ralabon?
Okay, so last week, we went live with our new radio system. We've gotten lots of positive feedback on that. It seemed to have better coverage than our previous dead zones. Uh, we have three antennas, one located on top of the police station here in town and then one in Melroy and Arlington. And all those integrate and work together. Uh, so we have a lot better reliability on signal and we're going to continue to search for dead spots and add radios as we can. In addition to that, um, the fiber that we have laid between VRMS and the Operations Center, that project is now done. We were on a wireless bridge that was sponsored by Verizon to get internet out to our Operations Center. And now we are, now we're running our own fiber and everything is connected. That project is complete. Moving forward for this summer, we have an intern that starts with us next Monday. We're super excited to have her onboard. Her name is Nicole and she is a senior at Purdue studying cybersecurity. So, part of the scope of work for this summer and some big, big projects we've got on our agenda include two labs, one for the high school and one for middle school. So, we are going to be running fresh cabling, fresh switching, and fresh devices. So, we can have an all-inclusive digital learning lab at, at, at the middle school and at the high school. And then we are also going to be deploying devices to do kindergarten through sixth grade teachers this fall. With Windows eleven, everybody will be getting a new laptop set up, so we'll be rolling that out as well. Over the past year, um, the tech team and I, we've done a lot of investigating to figure out why we have the network trouble that we do. And so, we have directed this year's E-Rate dollars towards beefing that up. So, we've identified several locations that seem to be giving us consistent issues. And we're putting about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars into beefing up that network infrastructure. So, moving forward, we don't have the problems that we've been having this school year. That's it.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Brad for his work on the radios. Like, there is a lot of like assigning the radios and doing all the things, but like people have no understanding of the fiber and the importance and how far, like he's trying to catch our district up, so good job, Brad.
There's no comparison.
Yeah.
The old to the new, no comparison.
Brad does a lot of work that's not seen.
Yeah.
General.
Jeremy Powers? Thank you for your time with us. I was, we appreciate very much. I wish you all the best for your new job.
I appreciate that, thank you, huh?
Nah-uh.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, take motion to adjourn.